Evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 8th Planning Board meeting. Would you all rise, please, and join me in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Public.
Which stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Dave, would you please do our roll?
Chairman John Curry.
Here. Sorry, Steve.
I'm back. Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Garbino.
By a Zoom here.
Dennis McNamara. Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Christopher Zabato.
Present via Zoom.
Thank you. First on our agenda, the minutes from November 10th, 2021. I have two different dates here. Were they the 13th or the 10th?
The 10th.
10th, okay. For the 10th, November 10th, 2021. Any changes? Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a time extension for the Cobbling Rock Conservation Subdivision application, and that's the property that's located at Cobbling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony's Road. It's a request for a 90-day extension of Resolution 2021-08. And it's for the dates for December 6, 2021, up to and including March 6, 2021. For the record, this property is on the south side of Cobbling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony Road in an R120 zone.
One correction from the current expiration date of December 6, 2021, to March 6, 2022.
Did I say one? I apologize.
Start writing that on our checks.
And it says it's written here. My fault. Okay, for again, it's from the dates of December 6, 2021, up to and including March 6, 2022.
Anyone here from the applicant?
Actually, I did. I talked. Tim Allen called me the other day, and he said, really, all they really have to do is get the rec fees in, and they're pretty much ready to go.
And then I'll make a motion that we accept the extension or grant the extension.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is continuation of the public hearing for the Steinberg Wetland and Water Course Protection Permit. It's an application for the property located at Three Tall Trees Court. It's for the installation of a pool, an in-ground pool and a patio. And for the, for the record, this is a property is in an R80 zone. Evening.
Good evening, everybody. William Beschras representing the Royal Fredericksson, the engineer for the owners. I guess, you know, we're back again. Last time when we were here, there was some incomplete items, and I think we submitted them to the engineer. And it's by understanding, I think, everything has been addressed. There's a couple of minor, extremely minor items that could be conditional to the resolution in the final approval. So we kindly request that we move on with this, and hopefully we can get them to swim in it next early spring. Let's put it that way. At this rate with this weather, we probably, probably will.
More like ice skating, yes.
Well.
Steve?
Yep. Sorry. So there, we do have some additional minor comments related to stormwater management. We do think that they can be conditions of approval. There's just some added notes that are required by DEC to be added to the plan. But, and the other comments we have are just a little shift in the rain garden, but staying within the overall limit of disturbance, just to provide separation to the drinking water well. And we would just advise the applicant's engineer to check the inverts of the stormwater on the, I guess that's the east side of the pool, just to make sure you have enough pipe cover. So there might just be some minor tweaks to the grading in that area, but all of that is within the limits of disturbance and, and doesn't materially affect the site plan. So those can all be conditions of approval, and if so directed, we would, we would work with the planning department to get those in the resolution.
You're comfortable with that?
We are very comfortable. We are okay with that, yes.
Dave, any comments from you? Okay. Then I'll open the, the public hearing if there's anyone here to speak on this matter. No? All right. Make a motion. We close the pub.
Just for the record, I'd like to note that there are no text messages for a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris or Nancy, do you have any comments?
None.
No? All right. Then I make a, make a motion that we have staff prepare a resolution for this application. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do you want that chairman's signature, or would you like to see it? I should have added with, with the, with the addition, additional comments that you brought up answered.
Yes.
Chairman's signature, okay?
No, without inclusion for chair's signature, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Same to you. Next on our agenda is the Crown Castle USA Application for Minor Modifications of an Existing Wireless Telecommunications Facility for the Special Use Permit for the Property Located at 294 Route 100. Evening.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Ferraro, attorney with the firm of Ferraro and Stamos. You're on behalf of the applicant, Crown Castle, on behalf of T-Mobile Northeast LLC. The application that was filed was for renewal and modification of the special use permit to upgrade the existing telecommunications facility at 294 Route 100. Currently, T-Mobile has six antennas on the tower at the 92-foot center line. Tower itself is 108-foot to the top of the existing antennas that are on it. In this application, what T-Mobile is looking to do is to swap out three of the existing antennas with three new ones that will be swapped out in place on the existing platform mount at the same center line height. In addition, there are two equipment cabinets currently on the ground within a lease area on a concrete pad, so one of them would be removed and replaced with two new cabinets for a total of three cabinets. Finally, there'll be one additional feed line that will be installed, and there are three TMAs, which are essentially amplifiers that would be removed, a little bit of an older technology, replaced with three new remote radio heads, all within the existing lease area. There'll be no impact on the height of the tower. There'll be no impact on the, the existing lease space. So there was a number of items that were submitted in support of this application. There was a structural report. There were, obviously there was a site plant, a construction drawing submitted, as well as an FCC emissions compliance report indicating that even once it's upgraded, the site would only be 2.12% of what the FCC would allow. So we believe this is a very minor modification, although with benefits to the community and that there'll be improved service. Given the minor nature of what's being proposed, we would ask respectfully the board to waive the requirement for a public hearing. I believe the board has that authority under the local ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Steve, you want to review your memo and comments, please?
We just had one comment, and it's been addressed since our memo was issued. We asked the applicant to provide an additional letter on that radio frequency emissions report, and they've done so. So we have no further comments on this.
Dave?
Mr. Chairman, this is a similar application to a number that you've received before, where essentially the, the applicants are looking just to swap out equipment to, to provide newer equipment. And as the attorney indicated, you do have the ability to, to waive the public hearing. That would be my suggestion at this point.
And hopefully, we're going down the road where it doesn't even have to get to this stage.
We can do that.
Yes.
That's part of the, the town is looking at various zoning revisions, and that may be one of them. Yes.
Does the board feel comfortable waiving the public hearing? We've done this. Okay. I guess we need a motion, though, for that.
I make a motion that we waive public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. So can you prepare a resolution?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
We did.
Do we have to vote to get a special use permit? Or just waiving a public hearing does that?
What was the question again?
On your comments, Steve, you said vote to grant a special use permit.
No. Well, the, the special use permit was already granted. You're just. The swap out.
Swap out? Okay. That's, thank you. Next on our agenda is Mastrian Tano Brothers, Inc. It's the application for the preliminary approval of subdivision for the property located at 2 Amawak Point Road. Nobody here?
Is there anybody in the hallway that couldn't fit in the room? Mastrian Tony Brothers, application for preliminary approval, 2 Amawak Point Road.
Well, we can go to the next item, and if they come, put them back on. Okay?
The applicant just stepped out.
From, from?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sure. No problem. Someone here from Paramount? Okay. Come on up. You just got moved to the, from the last of the agenda to right now. This is for Plum Brook Realty LLC. It's an application for the conceptual site plan review at the property located at Paramount and Somers, which is 189 Route 100. Good evening.
Good evening. Greg Scrum, representing Care Right, the owners of the property.
You could take that off if you want to go over to the map.
Oh, my name is Greg Scrum, Dunn Scrum Engineers. We represent Care Right, which are the owners of, or, well, they're the owners of the Paramount and Somers, and also the owners of the real estate that's adjacent to it. The property is, is, it's two lots, approximately about 96 acres total, two lots. And I don't know how familiar everybody is with the current facility, but it's an independent living and memory care facility, which occupies the, the parcel to the right. And then there's the other parcel adjacent to it, which they've been trying to, you know, find the use for it. They brought us in to do some other work there. We do, we do these sort of things for other communities. So the current plan is to basically make it into a sort of a campus that's, has a lot more synergy to it. And what you've got here is you've got about 48 patio homes and about 150 apartments. And these are independent living units. So it's sort of, you, you know, you get to certain point, you sit there and go, you know what? I don't want to mow the lawn anymore. I don't want to do any more maintenance. I just want a place I can go and, you know, eat, live, sleep. You know, if I'm traveling, I lock the door, I go somewhere else. I don't have, I know all the, all the headaches. These are, these are two-bedroom patio homes, all one floor. These are one-bedroom apartments. The building would be planned out as three floors. These are, these are all rental, so there's no ownership other than, than the facility itself. And there, with these sort of developments, there is a, an onsite dining area, kitchen, that sort of thing. So, so you don't have to necessarily prepare meals, although all the apartments do have kitchens, small kitchenettes.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
And I apologize for interrupting. When you first introduced the existing use, you described the facility that's already there as being independent living and memory care. That's what it currently is. Currently, it's independent living in the current facility.
I'm sorry, assisted living. Great catch. So yeah, it's assistant, assistant living. It's got memory care component to it. It's been there since 1959, 60, when it was initially approved. The, you know, this, the development is concentrated in the front here. This, there will be walking trails. There'll be around the pond, that sort of thing. There will be connections between two facilities. And as you can see, these facilities have, have a pretty small impact. The patio homes are, like I said, are two-bedroom, probably roughly around 1,000 square feet, one-car garage. There is parking on site, not, not, you know, doesn't necessarily need one parking space per unit. These facilities typically don't generate that much parking. If we needed more, we could. There's, there's tons of room adjacent to it. That's a brief introduction. I'd love to have some input from the board to see if it's something that, you know, is interesting. There's our, the board, there's our zoning issues that we have to work through. You know, we'll take time and effort. Nobody wants to go through something that's, you know, that's not appealing. So.
I'm sure the board will have some questions and, for you, but I'd just like to let our two staff make their comments and then open it up to the board.
From an engineering perspective, obviously, there's some wetlands to the south of the site, so there's likely some wetland and wetland buffer review needed, in addition to steep slopes and tree clearing that would just need to be further clarified and identified. In addition, it, it does look like it, there's a lot of coverage on the site, so we'd want to clarify where water and sewer or septic are, how that's being handled. I'm sure those details haven't been worked out, but those would be our, our key concerns. Yeah, now we'd likely have the, the town's traffic engineer also take a review, you know, but, but beyond that, the, the engineering issues are there, given the, the wetlands on the site and, and the magnitude of the proposed use.
Yeah, I fully expected a lot more engineering comments as we go through the process.
There's not, he hasn't given me much to comment on.
So from a, from a planning standpoint, one of the comments that, the initial comments I had when, when these gentlemen came in and were talking about this proposed use is that typically communities like Somers and Northern Westchester communities have an aging population, and they typically don't have the types of housing resources that are needed for folks who want to stay in the community but don't necessarily want to live in a single-family home environment. And it's, it's part of the, kind of this age in place concept where a facility, where you may have age in place in the facility, or you may have an age in place concept within the community itself, where you're providing a variety of housing options for all types of residents of all age groups. And so that's why I thought it was, it would be helpful to have the planning board before we start getting into some of the zoning issues that would need to go before the town board, to have the planning board weigh in on kind of the, the kind of, kind of a demographics field, the need for housing, and then also to talk about some of the specific or general site planning issues, particularly because this proposal right now is contemplated along the Route 100 frontage, and whether there are any issues that the planning board sees as part of this application. And again, this is just a preliminary presentation to get, and you've had a couple of these, I think, as, in the recent months, and I think they've been very helpful for applicants as they move forward.
If I can touch base, just on a couple of things, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to leave this aerial here for the town. So, because this, this is, you know, we didn't, we didn't have a chance, so we're submitting so fast, we didn't have a chance to, right, get it in. But this helps kind of show how it fits in and why we fit it in, where we, what we did. Currently, this is kind of open field area in this here, and it's very moderate slopes, nothing, nothing extreme. This is much more severe slopes. We do have, the water is an issue that we're working through. Water is actually less of a concern for me than sewer, to be frankly. There's a lot of water. The, well, we have wells in the site. There's, there've been eight wells, I think, five or six are currently using right now. Those, those existing wells may have enough capacity even to supply this building. There's plenty of capacity there, but if not, we could drill another well in all of this area here, and it'd be good. Sewer is an issue. We're trying to work out whether we can piggyback on the current discharge permit, or if we've got to go subsurface absorption fields, which raise a whole bunch of other questions, and those are all things that, you know, we're going to work out. And they could, you know, potentially modify the project, or those subsurface would go in this area here on this property, because this property here has a wastewater treatment plant, package plant, and it has a water disinfection plant that we're currently upgrading, which would have almost enough capacity to serve this here, too.
Did you say would have?
It, it would. It, it would be close.
Okay.
And just because the health department's making us design it for 500 gallons a minute, which is, which is pretty extensive. So we may have put that in there, and we'll put a storage tank, but you know, some modification like that to make it work. So my, my personal feeling is we're probably going to be okay with the, with the water as is, with some minor modifications. Worst case scenario, the drill, the well. And then we got stormwater and all that stuff, you know?
So I, I've got a couple of questions about the project as, as a whole, and I'm trying to wrap my head around what it, what we could really define it as. So you, so the current usage is an assisted living and memory care facility, correct?
Yes.
Correct. It's not a skilled nursing home?
I'm not sure if I, I'm not sure of definite, the difference in definitions of that. So.
All right. I mean, like a skilled nursing home is in, and I'm sure there's DOH, Department of Health, licensing involved in these things, and that delineates the difference between an assisted living facility and a skilled nursing. It's probably more skilled nursing, in my experience, is more like 24-hour, around-the-clock nursing, nursing care for, you know, for residents and patients that can't take care of themselves in any way, shape, or form. You don't do that at the facility, correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But I can find out for sure, you know, for you.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, these, so these type of questions, we're gonna, we're gonna ask, and what we've seen in applications before, usually there is some representation from the current business, you know, who can answer these, these type questions, because what, what I'm, what I'm seeing here is you are looking to build 198 individual residences. 150 of them are apartments, correct? That individuals will have access to, could potentially drive up to and leave at their own will, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the same for the 48 patio homes that you, as you call it, two-bedroom, 1,000 square foot? Okay. So I, I don't see how, how that like falls into, you know, like any sort of medical care, like an assisted living. It's independent living. It's really just senior apartment, senior housing. So you're looking to build a housing complex on your current facility, correct?
It is senior housing. It's not, it's not like directly related to, to assisted living or, or memory care.
Right. And then I get the concept, right, that now, as folks age in place, I think that's the term that's used in the industry, you can transfer them from their independence into something that's a little more assisted. And then when they're incapable of, of living.
They need to.
Underassisted, right, then they transfer out to a skilled, skilled nursing facility. So I, I just want to clarify for the record that that's the actual concept here, and that it, it is just individual apartments and, and housing that you're looking to build on the current property. And I ask that so that we can sort of clarify this for zoning regulations, current use, special use exceptions, and things like that, that, because I, I don't, in my opinion, I don't see how building extra housing is anything medical, so to speak. Medical is probably not the right term. But you're, you're basically looking to build a housing complex on, off of Route 100 and Plum Brook Road in, in an empty space that would require you to construct 150 apartments, three-story houses, three-story structures. So we've got some zoning stuff there, and then 48 patio homes.
Correct.
All right.
They're, they're going to be age restricted, that sort of thing, but it is, it is basically senior apartments and.
How many folks can live in an apartment?
I'll, I can find out more about the mix of, of these. They tend to be, the ones, the ones that we've done, that they tend to be mainly single individuals. I don't know that it's restricted, and, you know, I don't, I don't think it's restricted, but they're mainly predominantly single.
So could a, could a married couple who decide, and I think the example you used was they were tired of taking care of their own personal home and decide to move into one of these, and so we have a husband and wife, aged couple, would they be eligible to live together in an apartment?
I would imagine so, but I can verify that. But I would imagine so.
Okay. I mean, so, so, so these are some of the things that, while I understand from an engineering and, and construction element may not involve you, but for the conceptual idea, so that we can understand what's about to come down the road, we also like to understand the total business model here and what it is that's going to actually occur at the site, right? And that's, and that's just sort of to pave the way for some of the other processes that happen within the town, the approvals and, and other boards and things like that. So I just want a clarification from that, because it wasn't completely clear, at least not to me, the way I had read some of the stuff, and I just wanted to lay that out now so that I know what to expect and what questions to ask as you guys enter into, you know, the site plan approval phases and things like that, should we get that far down the road?
Yep. No, those are, those are great questions. I will get some answers for you on those.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned there would be an eating facility.
Yes.
Where would that be?
That would be in the main building, the, the apartment building.
It sounds very similar to what they have over on the Hudson River north of Croton. Yes.
If you told me to, if I get the facility's name, I'd be happy to look into it. They, what happens is you, you, whether you live in the, in the patio homes or the apartments, you're, you're able to either buy meal plans along with your, with your whole package, or, or you can buy individual, you know, meals. It, they're only to serve the, you know, the onsite people, but it is a full-blown dining facility.
Any other questions?
Are people renting units, or are they buying?
Rent, said rent. They're all rental.
Do you currently provide?
They're not responsible for any maintenance outside the building, obviously.
Correct. Other than, you know, they're, they're allowed to have gardens, flowers, you know, things like that. But they're not mowing the lawns, they're not maintaining the, you know, siding, they're, you know, plowing the driveways, none of that, everything, everything. Although those services are part of the package.
Apartment building and a homeowners association.
Do you know if any of these services would be reimbursable by insurance, or is this all intended to be private pay rentals?
I think this, I think these are all private pay. They're not, it's not like the, the assisted living or the, you know, this, this is really, you know, independent living. This is, this is, you know, I'm going to be up here for three, four, or five months a year. I'm going to go to Florida, or I'm going to travel, or I'm going to be here full-time. I just don't want to deal with mortgages and all the insurances and all that sort of thing. I'm just going to write a check for, you know, for rent. I'm going to write a check for my meals if I want, you know. You can choose a level of, you know, services you want as far as that goes, but it's really, you know, you know, low, low headaches and, you know, low, you're not tied into it for, you know, it's like a mortgage or a house where you're buying a townhouse, and all of a sudden, you know, you've got all those costs of, you know, mortgage acquisition, insurances, maintenance, and all that stuff.
If people, if people didn't want to leave for Florida for three months, they'd still have the unit when they came back, though, right?
Absolutely.
This is not like a hotel.
No, no, no. It's not. No, no, no. There's no short-term rentals.
Okay.
No, it's.
Do you, do you happen to know what the current census is in the assisted living and memory care facility? How many residents you have there now currently?
I do not know the exact number. No. It'd be, it'd be a guess, but I guess it's somewhere around, my guess, somewhere around 300.
300, okay.
My guess. I can.
Yeah, I understood.
Yep. I'm trying to think, because we did a water report, and, and, you know, I think it's a little less than 300.
And you, would you know what the capacity is there? Like, what's the maximum amount your current assisted living and memory care can hold?
Off the top of my head, I, I think, I think that, that number that I'm, that I'm thinking from, from the water usage report, which we wrote two years ago, my memory's not, that's great, but I think it was somewhere just under 300, and that would be capacity-wise.
And that number was done pre-COVID, that census, two years ago, you're saying?
Well, I think it's, I think it's, I think that's like their permit number. What I, what I would get you is a, is a. I, I, what I, what I would get you is a, is a permit number and I could also get you like today's occupancy rate if, if it's not full.
Yeah, I mean, so.
I'd be happy to get that for next meeting. Yep.
You know, because that would be helpful because you know, wi- wi- with this being one large site, we have to take that into consideration, right? The, 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 the current census count that you have, uh, the total resources that are being utilized by that. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's all part of one business model, I would assume. It's like basically you're looking to expand the facility, just not the current building. One, not connected to the assisted living and memory care, at least from the plans that I saw, that's what it looked like. Uh, but in, in, in total, this site would house, you know, if you're saying that there's, uh, easily two occupants allowed in each one of these apartments, let's say a husband and wife deal. And at a hundred and ninety-eight, that's four hundred. So we've got, now we're looking at upwards of seven hundred residents right in this area that, that, that are, that are living there and that utilize town resources, right? You're telling me that, uh, a lot of these folks will be independent, they'll drive potentially, while I do, I do recognize that not every occupant would have a car, but they could. So we have to look at that, uh, you know, parking spaces. We want to make sure that the amount of allocated parking in your plans are gonna, are gonna be sufficient for the amount of, uh, of apartments that you're going to build. And so, and so this is all, this is all data down the road that we're going to ask for.
Yeah, it's a hundred and ninety-eight cars, a hundred and ninety-eight cars.
Right, exactly, potentially. And then, you know, in it's a lot, seven hundred people.
Well, and, and, and so, and these are great questions and what, what we'll do for you is we'll, we'll put a narrative together. So, you know, you'll get a three, four, five page, whatever it takes of a narrative to kind of give you a little better description of what we're doing and answer some of these questions that, that you're posing.
As I recall, as I recall, historically, having to do with the Paramount, when it was the Somers Nursing Home, there were some concerns on our part about the main entrance being Route one hundred and not focusing on using the back entrance. Um, there were concerns about that and you were putting this housing very close to that back entrance. So there's some issues that will have to be addressed and concerns from the past having to use that roadway.
Sure.
Onto that narrow back road.
And we can, we can give you typical trip generation numbers and that sort of thing and, um, you know, help, help us, whatever, help, whatever information you need to help assess the, the impacts from that.
Well, I'm wondering if we'll prohibit your usage of that back entrance. That was a big issue in the past.
The back entrance, uh, were we talking to the background in terms of Plum there?
Yes.
Plum Brook, yeah.
Yeah, that, that doesn't get used.
Well, there's some other issues with that.
Okay. I, at least, at least it's been chained off every, every time I've, you know, been on site. Um, the front entrance, I know they've just kind of put some new signage up there or whatever and, you know, had it, uh, cleaned it up a lot. Uh, they've been doing kind of constant work since a new owner's purchased it to try to, you know, I know they've read a lot of the inside recently. So it's an ongoing process, but they're, they're updating it quite a bit.
I think I'm one of seven. I think we're quite a ways away from a site walk.
Yeah, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sir, any more board questions or e- either of you anymore? Questions or concern? No. I thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chris and Nancy?
Okay.
No more questions?
No more questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, once you leave, you can't, no, I'm like, great. Right, right. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't hear his comment. Was that pertaining to this, to this application?
Yes, he, he said it is a skilled nursing facility.
Ah, so we do have.
Oh, yes, it's been a skilled nursing since nineteen fifty-nine.
We're talking about the existing one, Chris.
Right, that's, that's what I thought. That's why I was.
Oh, it is. There's twenty-four hour care there. Yeah, twenty-four seven.
Wondering what I'm listening to because none of it's making any sense.
Right. All right, yeah, I, I, I would suggest on the next application, have the, the owners, again, I understand, sir, your, your standpoint is from a construction and engineering uh, perspective, but we, you know, again, especially in the introductory phases, we like to get an idea of the entire concept. All right. And so that we make sure that that's in line with then what's designed and it's, you know, and all of that falls into the proper, you know, rules and regulations of the town and the state and the environment and things like that. So thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. We'll see you next year. Did, did any, anybody show up from Estrein? Thank you again. Estrein Tony, okay.
For the record, this is, uh, the application for, uh, preliminary sub, preliminary approval subdivision for the property located at two Ammo Walk Point Road. It's in an R eighty zone. Evening.
Good evening. Uh, we, we did receive the engineering comments and planning comments. Um, we do have some work to do. Um, I can tell you that the property has been flagged by the surveyor, so I think at our last meeting, we talked about the board going out to do a site, site walk and taking a look at, you know, the layout. And that's what we're looking for tonight, so you just schedule a site walk.
Okay. I want to hear from, um, Stephen Day, please.
Um, yep, great. Thank you for, um, acknowledging the, the comments received. Uh, there was some additional information that we were looking for on the stormwater measures and calculations, uh, clarification on a number of the items proposed, um, including the infiltration, detention pond design, uh, drainage swells and confirmation of whether any field testing has been done to date, uh, to support those calculations. Are there steep slopes and tree removals, uh, sufficient that they require a town permit for those?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we certainly would need, uh, from an engineering perspective, an additional submittal to review for completeness and, and finalized comments. We flagged primarily just additional information that we needed to, um, fully complete our review. Uh, but this being more than one acre of disturbance and in the DEP watershed, um, does require a full SWIP, although not DEP review for the single lot being proposed here.
Does, does, if I remember correctly from, we had an applicant years ago, doesn't being so close to the watershed require completely different regulations a- and for like the septic system and everything as opposed to normal, almost like twice the size or something?
Uh, the DEP does have overlay regulations. I don't think they're quite that severe, but they do limit some of the technologies and things that can be used, um, within the watershed, so.
Okay. A- and also I, your question for the council about the segmentation concern?
Yep.
Can you explain that?
Sure. Um, and I, and I mean that as a, a preliminary comment that we need some more information from the applicant to review it with council. Um, the, there is construction on the existing lot one that's proposed to be subdivided. And so we just, we're looking for an opinion from council or additional information from the applicant as to whether um, there's a segmentation issue, especially around stormwater permitting. If the two lots were proposed at the same time, there might, but not necessarily be, um, more than two acres of disturbance and that would trip some other DEP stormwater requirements. So it's some additional information that we need to, to have to review.
Okay. Dave?
I just had, uh, a very minor comment on kind of the, um, explanation of some of the zoning, uh, dimensions, which I think the applicant has corrected. Uh, that was it. I think most of these are engineering related.
Do you think, do you both think we're ready for a site walk?
That would be my suggestion.
Um, any board member comments or questions on this item?
Yeah.
Um, what's, what's the schedule? I guess we should sooner than later before the white stuff amounts to something. This Saturday morning? How's that work?
You ready for it?
I'm fine, yes, we're ready.
Chris, Nancy?
Sure.
I would not be able to attend, but I don't think you need a hundred percent, uh, board compliance. So that's up to you, chairman.
Bruce, you, okay. Nine o'clock?
It'd be fine.
Nine? Nine?
Nine AM.
Nine AM. At the site, okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. We'll see you then.
Take notes for me, Nancy.
Yeah.
And pictures?
Pictures.
Hi, hi, how are you? Good. Um, our next item is the Somers National Golf Course, application for site plan modifications for the property located at one thousand West Hill Drive. Um, it's designated, it's a DRD overlay district. I'm sorry, it's a, it's DRD, which means designated residential development overlay district. Um, before the applicant presents this, I'd like to read into the record, um, letters from, not, not the full letter, but people that wrote us letters, public letters. Um, and please excuse me if I butcher your names. Dom Rubino, the president of Heritage Hills Society. Dorothea Cooper, president of condo eight. Bob Berman, president of condo fourteen. R Davis, president of condo fifteen. Ed Goldfarb, the president of condo sixteen. Luis Secquetti, president, council of condominiums, condo seventeen. And George Rotella, president, council of condominiums, condo twenty. Um, George Rotella, again, from condo twenty. Larry Santizzi, president of condo twenty-two. Warren Fink, vice president condo thirty. Mark and Lindia Grassa, condo seventeen. Sylvia McFarland, six forty B, sixty-four B, excuse me. Sandy Farantello, a hell of a chills resident, no address. And then the staff I've heard from, Mello Halloran, Megan Cedar and Barbara Bowe. Thank you for the record. I'm sorry, please excuse my butchering of any of your names.
Uh, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. For the record, my name is Quentin Liu and I'm one of the owners of Somers National Golf Club and the applicant on file. First, I'd like to announce that Bart Lansky has recused himself from representing us as an attorney. So he is no longer involved in this project and we are now seeking new counsel, a new land use attorney to support our case here. So I just wanted to make that announcement first. Second, I've come to know and work with many members of the Heritage Hills community. We are very respectful of our neighbors and Heritage Hills and we like to, like to be considered good neighbors. I believe we've been open and transparent and we've had good relationship with Heritage Hills Society over the past three years under our current ownership. For example, we've completed the sale of the East Hill nine-hole golf course, which I believe is a great outcome for both parties. We've had two, we've had open two-way communications about our respective plans, activities, the mutual areas of interest. And over the past several months, we've provided an overview of our plans that are now before the planning board prior to our submission. I'm also keenly aware of the opposition to our plans. I've read every single one of the letters that you just mentioned that was sent to the planning board and to the members of the town council. It's our goal to address those concerns directly this evening and as we move forward through the process. There's a lot of misinformation being communicated on several fronts and we plan to provide the facts of our endeavor. There have been specific concerns raised about traffic and high usage, the solitude of Heritage Hills, the quality of life, the public and outsiders kind of, you know, and, you know, competing on the, the lifestyle within Heritage Hills, the water runoff and the drainage, as well as the construction timelines. What I'd like to address now is the concern over the lowering of property values within Heritage Hills. I think we can all agree that the current well-functioning eighteen-hole golf course increases the value of the properties in Heritage Hills. In particular, every listing that is out there on the real estate market references the golf course as a, as a value add for the community. We envision that a miniature golf course would only add to the recreational options for the residents of Heritage Hills, much like, for example, a bocce ball court, pickleball and, and other low act, low impact activities. The new Metallog Park, for example, represents a great step forward to address the needs of the changing demographics within Heritage Hills. For example, the installation of the new playground and the fabulous walking trails that have been well-received. Heritage Hills Society and committees have done an excellent job transforming that open space. A miniature golf course follows that approach and would appeal to the residents of Heritage Hills of all demographics and of all ages. I'd like to take a few minutes, if I can, to address the miniature golf course. Miniature golf course, as we know, is a recreational sport that can be enjoyed by all ages. For example, my parents, who are in their eighties and my wife and I, who are in our fifties, would enjoy a round of golf that we can both, all partake in, even though we have a big age difference. Indeed, grandparents and grandchildren can enjoy a round of golf. In fact, all ages can enjoy relaxing around the golf in a matter of an hour, an hour and a half. Miniature golf can also offer cardiovascular exercise. It's estimated that you can burn actually three hundred calories in a round of miniature golf. The miniature golf would all for, offer another fun activity for the residents of Heritage Hills. There would be new clubs, new leagues, social events, or simply an opportunity to enjoy the outdoors with a small group of family and friends. Our current golf membership today in the golf course represent, uh, is represented by twenty-five to thirty percent of Heritage Hills residents today. That's the eighteen-hole golf course. We expect at least thirty or forty percent of our clientele for the miniature golf course to come from Heritage Hills. Given that it's more accessible than the full eighteen-hole golf course, takes less time and can be played by all ages. We're currently working with Harris Miniature Golf Company that recognizes a national leader in design and construction with more than fifty years' experience and have built over eight hundred golf, golf courses throughout the world. And every course is custom-designed. Harris relies heavily, heavily on water features and beautiful landscaping to create fun, inviting spaces. The course will be ADA compliant. The course is designed to be natural, causing, using earth tones to blend in with the landscape and natural green colors and bow- boulders. And this will not be an amusement park version of a miniature golf course. We also plan to incorporate historical elements from the town of Somers and Heritage Hills into the design. The initial designs that we, that we've prepared are discreet, sophisticated and very focused on using the existing contours and fit into the surroundings. And again, we are not creating a miniature amusement park or carnival-themed miniature golf course. The team at Harris specializes in designing and building golf courses with stunning beauty by combining terrace layouts and eye-catching water features like falls, fountains, ponds and streams. They use extensive masonry rock, gunite throughout their design to create tiers, terraces, walls and borders. As a result, landscape courses can provide a soothing outdoor space for adults and lots of fas- fascinating funds for kids. The key to success is building a beautiful course that is interesting and fun to play with, just enough to challenge a guest. Just enough to challenge the guests, want to come back for, and, and play again. We know that a well-designed and well-built course will produce repeat business year after year. To that end, we have renderings that we would be happy to share with the public in terms of what we have already designed. Regarding the business plan for miniature golf, our projections are based on a northern miniature golf course, meaning we're going to operate between May and September during the year. There's more daylight during the summer months, so the need for incremental lighting is not eliminated, but dramatically reduced. Obviously, the warmer weather during these months will also help make the experience more enjoyable. We're hoping to work with Heritage Hills Society to create membership plans that would be created and cater specifically to the needs of Heritage Hills residents to enjoy the miniature golf. For example, residents of Heritage Hills would be the first to be offered membership. Further, we'll be creating low-cost membership plans for all residents of Heritage Hills. We're creating exclusive hours for access by the residents, providing for shuttle bus access and hosting social events just for residents. Next, I'd like to share some thoughts on golf simulators, which is another part of our plan. Golf simulators have become a natural extension of golf clubs today. For example, they have them in Salem Golf Club. They also have them in Centennial, which are all nearby. They provide an option for our members and guests to practice golf primarily during inclement weather, weather and during the winter months. Using the latest technology, indoor golf allows players to virtually play golf courses from anywhere around the world. We envision up to four simulators to be operational in the final design. We also plan to give golf lessons, provide for club fittings and other golf-related functions in the simulators. Availability and pricing will be given priority to members and access will be provided on a per-hour basis. Regarding cigar lounge, cigars are also a natural extension of the golf experience today. The primary patrons will be our golf members and daily guests. We do not envision to be a retail store or any others, or where other smoke products are sold over the counter. So this is a membership-based and for golfers only. Again, a high-level sophistication with the quorum is planned and expected. In closing, I received. In closing, I received copies of all the letters and emails regarding the concerns raised by the residents, the condo associations and Heritage Hill Society. We're committed to working with all these groups to directly address the concerns in an open and transparent manner. To that end, we are open to attend any meetings with the community in the coming weeks to discuss this project. Now I'd like to turn the floor over to Richard Williams, who will walk through the application to clarify for the record what the application consists of and correct a lot of misinformation that's out there. So, Richard.
So, good evening. My name is Rich Williams and I'm with Insight Engineering or the Site Civil Engineers for the project. And tonight I'm going to slowly and methodically walk us through the application. It's information that we've presented to this board before. But I want the numbers to be presented clearly and accurately, so that as we move forward and hopefully move to a public hearing, which is our next step in the planning process, we can do so accurately. We formally submitted to this board, uh, an amended site plan, stormwater management, steep slopes and tree removal, uh, applications. And that is for, um, three main components. I'm just going to start referencing the site plan. So as I talk, everyone knows what I'm talking about. Looking at the aerial that's up right now, uh, do you need me to rotate it or is the TV screen okay?
I can see.
Okay. You have West Hill Drive, north and south. The existing clubhouse and restaurant. This is the existing maintenance facility in the light brown. We have all the existing parking lots here. And the first part, uh, that you heard Quentin reference was the cigar bar and golf simulators. That is going to be constructed, uh, in the existing maintenance facility building. We're going to do a small terrace to the north for the cigar smokers. That's going to be four hundred and forty-one square feet. And then we're going to have an addition on the south side of the building of one thousand nine hundred and forty-six square feet, which will help us renovate this facility to create the golf simulators. One of the things that Quentin didn't mention is right now, after you finish around the golf, when you tend to light up a cigar, it happens to be in the same area that coincides with the terrace for the restaurant. Now, smoking cigars is an extension of the golf game. However, smoking cigars and eating at a restaurant sometimes aren't compatible. So, you know, this is also designed to help separate those two uses and give cigar smokers a place to go that may be less impactful to the restaurant business. The other components of our application consist of the miniature golf course, which is shown here, and the associated twenty-four, uh, space parking lot. Now, as I talk tonight, I'm going to reference a previous site plan application and I'm doing it for the purposes of comparing impacts. This board has previously been approved and adopted a negative declaration for a site plan to occur in the same exact portion of the property. And that was done circa twenty seventeen. When you compare the impacts of this application to that, we are less in all regard. We have less traffic. We have less disturbance. We have less impervious surface. We have, um, lower intensity of use. Uh, and just to refresh everybody, that application was for the construction of a pool cabana and outdoor swimming pool and two tennis courts. That previous application, that is not this current application, had sixty-eight parking spaces, twenty of which, twenty additional parking spaces designated to be land banked. It had over two acres of disturbance. And it anticipated approximately eighty peak hour trips with respect to traffic. Just to talk about now our application. We originally presented this conceptually on September eighth. We attended a review meeting on October thirteenth, in which the planning board gave us some recommendations with respect to layout. One was to try and reorient the miniature golf course, which was originally laid out here into the L-shaped fashion you see, to take advantage of the existing disturbed areas on the site and minimize tree removal. Following the October thirteenth meeting, uh, we had a site walk on October twenty-third. And then we resubmitted November twenty-second, which is what brings us before you tonight. So far, we've provided this board, uh, obviously the site civil drawing set, all the applications and forms and fees, architectural plans, architectural renderings, the golf course plans, lighting plan, full environmental assessment form, stormwater pollution prevention plan and trip generation numbers. With respect to the application itself, um, in total, we have approximately one point four acres of disturbance. Again, that's now condensed from what our original submission was, and I'm going to show you a figure in a few minutes that compares the, the last approved application to what we originally submitted to where we're at now, based on the comments and recommendations of the staff and the board. As far as traffic. We provided trip generation numbers based on ITE. One of the things that we did was we quantified how much of less traffic the golf course is going to generation, uh, generate as a result of selling the nine holes to society. The additional nine holes, uh, would have generated forty-one peak hour vehicle trips. Our project is only going to, is anticipated to generate eight to sixteen vehicle trips in the peak hour. So again, for comparison purposes, we are eighteen to sixteen peak hour trips. We are down forty-one vehicle trips as a result of selling the nine holes and shrinking the size of the golf course. But all of that is smaller than the previous application, which contemplated eighty peak hour trips. Again, we're only eight to sixteen. As far as tree removal. Uh, the last application had a, just over a hundred and sixty trees proposed to be removed. So, you know, I saw a lot of the letters reference three to four hundred. Let's now talk about our application. We are currently at a hundred and six trees. And one thing I want to point out as a result of the suggestions of the planning board and staff, by relocating the golf course further to the north, we reduced the tree removal in between our golf course and West Hill Drive by almost fifty percent. The last time you saw this plan, we were going to remove ninety-one trees in this portion of the site. Again, we pushed everything to the north. And now you only have forty-one trees being removed just at the very southern end of the golf course. So we substantially reduced the number of trees. And again, we're less than the tree removal from the previous application. Just so that the record is clear, our total tree removal based on this plan is one hundred and six trees. What I'd like to do now is I'm just going to switch boards, um, and I'm going to switch boards just to show some graphics of what's being proposed. The first is I'm going to start with the plans in the upper left-hand corner. These are some photos from Harris Golf, the golf designer. One of the things that we're very sensitive to is we're a golf club. Whatever we construct has to fit in both from a landscaping and architectural perspective with the golf club. We can't build an amusement park. It, it just won't fit. It'll actually detract from the golf course. We can't build, you know, a Jersey Shore boardwalk, you know, uh, miniature golf course. This is not going to be dinosaurs and pirate ships. If you can see by the photos, it's very low-key. Everything is low in height. You have all earth tones, natural greens. You can see there's a lot of stone elements, which is what Quentin was referring to with the masonry. You will have concrete for the sidewalks. Again, that's for ADA. This will be an ADA compliant miniature golf course. But you're looking at low-lying landscaping, low-lying water features and earth tones. You know, I would say the most colorful aspects of this, which aren't designed, are going to be the historic references that we incorporate. And we're still working through that from a design standpoint. We're not sure if it's going to be in the form of plaques or if we can incorporate elements into the, into the design of the course. But again, you know, this is really an understated design that we want to keep that way on purpose, because that's going to complement the perimeter landscaping that we're proposing around the course. And we do have a substantial vegetative buffer in addition to the trees we're leaving to help screen the understory. You know, if you look through that forest now, there's not a lot of understory growth. You have a lot of taller trees, taller canopy heights. So we are going to be doing, uh, natural plantings along the perimeter of the golf course to help create some greenery. So you're not looking straight into the golf course. The other thing I want to talk about is lighting. I believe we prepared lighting plans. We're restricting our pole heights to twelve feet, which is lower than a lot of things that are common in the town of Somers. A lot of times when I'm doing commercial developments, I'm at fifteen feet. I will tell you the original plans before we even submitted them had much different pole heights. Quentin and his team pushed back right away and we made the miniature golf course redesign the lighting plan so we can get twelve-foot pole heights. That's more in line with residential fixtures. Um, and we did that on purpose because we want to be sensitive to the neighbors and we knew lighting would be a sensitive topic. Some of the other pictures here are just some interior views of the golf simulators as well as the additions, uh, to the maintenance, uh, facility. Again, the architecture on the maintenance facility is we're really just blending and matching into what's there. It'll match the clubhouse. So everything kind of has a uniform appearance. The last plan I want to put in front of you tonight, um, compares where we started or where the last applicant started to where we're at today as far as just overall land disturbance and impact to the property. In the upper left-hand corner in red, what shaded is the limit of disturbance from the previously approved site plan. The one that envisioned, uh, two tennis courts. By the way, both tennis courts were going to be situated right along West Hill Drive South. The Pool Project and the Pool Cabana. And you can see the disturbance in the proximity to the property line, both on our southern and on our western borders. The next picture was our first submission to the planning board. And again, we were less than the original disturbance, but you can still see we were proposing disturbance fairly close to West Hill Drive South. Um, and that was when we had a more square or rectangular, uh, miniature golf course designed. And I think it was a combination of Mr. Smith and Miss Cannon, who strongly urged us to look at, uh, coming up with a layout that utilized the existing disturbed and stockpiled areas, which are unsightly and, and try and make use of that as opposed to disturbing more natural area. What we did from our original submission, uh, is we took a parking lot that was sighted here and we moved it to its current location here. And we reconfigured the golf course in this L-shaped configuration. And that brought us down to the lower left-hand corner, this green figure, which is our current limited disturbance. And you can see how much more area we're preserving between West Hill Drive South. And our limits of disturbance, you can see we've also pulled as far east as possible. The last thing I want to talk to you tonight, which I haven't yet, is stormwater. It's a topic that, um, we've heard about, uh, every meeting we've been at and we've been talking about, but I just want to rego, rego through, um, or revisit our stormwater approach. So everyone understands what we're proposing to do. Our understanding is to our west, the condo units receive water. Right now, water sheet flows from east to west off the golf course. There are some drainage structures out in the woods. And if you remember from the planning word site walk, there are some berms and bermed up areas that slowly do hold back some water. But ultimately water flows over land down towards the continuation of the road network and onto lower units. What we're proposing to do is take the opportunity with the regrading in the site and the construction of the miniature golf course to actually put in a proper collection system. That's going to allow us to catch not only all the new work that we're doing, but some of the existing impervious surfaces uphill of us. Now, the last plan, um, it was approved, proposed, just putting that back into the ground or into the hillside. We're a golf course. We use water. We need to keep the grass watered and green in order for golf course to be usable. Instead of just putting the water back into the ground on the hillside, we want to collect that water. We're going to put it in a large underground cistern that is designed to take away three inches of runoff over the tributary area. I'm sorry if that doesn't mean a lot to people, does to Steve and I, um, but it's a significant volume of water. And we're going to connect into the irrigation system. Last time it was before you, there were some questions as to how we're going to do that. We've talked to the golf course. We've talked to some irrigation people. We have a schematic layout, um, of which we'll have to finalize as we, you know, the details of as we go through the plan. But what happens is this upper end of the golf course, just going to switch plans real quick. So I've zoomed out pretty far on this one and I'm sorry, but it's so that the board understands the big picture. You can see the gray down here is those existing parking lots and here's our clubhouse. We have an irrigation pond all the way in this corner of the property and we have an irrigation pond on the other side of West Hill Drive North. This irrigation pond here feeds all of the golf course. It is not practical for us to take our stormwater and pump it all the way to that pond. However, what we can do is where this main line comes up to the southern end of the golf course, we can put a valve at a strategic location so that we catch the lawn area that we want to irrigate and basically shut off the lower pond from feeding the upper area with a valve. And then what we can do is we can connect into that same line and feed it from our irrigation system. And that's what we're intending to do. We're going to irrigate the southern portion of the golf course here. And we've, we've provided the calculations in the SWIP to show how much lawn area we have, how much area we need to irrigate to meet the stormwater requirements and how we're going to irrigate that area. So we're basically going to connect into the irrigation system and feed the upper portion of that system with a new pump tied to our rainwater harvesting tanks. We are also going to make provisions. So if those tanks go empty, because we can't predict when it is and isn't going to rain, that we can turn this pond back on if we need to. Because I would expect that we are going to burn water through those tanks pretty quickly and they are going to be going empty regularly, which is a good thing because that means they're able to accept more runoff when it rains. We're designing this thing for the storm event that has a hundred percent chance of occurring in a year. So any storm event that's basically crudely put, three inches in twenty-four hours. Most of the storm, we, storm events we get, in fact, ninety percent of the storm events we get are one and a half inches or less. And that's not my statistics. That's what's put out, um, by Cornell and other people. And those are the design models that we have or the design features that we have to utilize. So, I think the stormwater solution is progressing. Um, we'll continue to work with what are in current. But as far as, you know, the big pictures on the numbers, again, we're lower in impact than the previously approved plan. Hundred and six trees being removed. We reduced the amount of trees being removed adjacent to West Hill Drive South from ninety-one to forty-three. One point four acres of disturbance, eight to sixteen peak hour trips, which is significantly less than the last application at eighty. And which is also less than the reduction of forty-one trips that are no longer occurring from selling the other golf course or the other nine holes. So that's our application. Um, I think our next step, if the board is open to it, would be for us to schedule a public hearing. As Quentin said, we are, uh, probably going to have a land use attorney with us again. We just don't have one at the moment, but I believe he's working on that. So we're here to answer any questions from the board.
Let's hear from Stephen Dave first, please.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, we issued a, a comment memo, um, seeking some additional information uh, on the cistern operations, uh, to make sure that it's designed in accordance with DEC requirements. Perhaps for the, the board and the public listening here, you could talk through how that cistern will, is proposed to work during the non-irrigation season.
So the non-irrigation season tends to coincide with winter.
Yes.
When, when, when rain typically, um, isn't an issue when you're not having recall, uh, reoccurring rainfall events. We do envision at the end of the season, as we're winding down on our irrigation season, we can make sure that those tanks are empty and that would be the plan. So as you start to get some of those late December, you know, you tend, we, we usually get one or two storm events in late December where you do get rainfall. We can have those tanks de-watered and ready to operate as they're intended.
So then, uh, where would that accumulated water be discharged to over time? Is that to pump back to the existing collection system or is that otherwise sent down to the lower pond?
It would, it would discharge to the golf course, to the lawn areas on the golf course.
During non-freezing periods.
Yes. And again, this, this isn't a practice we're inventing. This is a New York State DEC green infrastructure practice that they're encouraging us to use.
That's correct. Um, and so we just want to make sure that it's designed and there's a, a maintenance and operational plan that spells all of those details out specifically. Uh, I think we did have a question on the pumping rate from that, but that's a detail that can be, uh, just coordinating. I think we did have a question on the pumping rate from that, but that's a detail that can be just coordinating between the hydro cad model that was produced and some of the text around it. I think it was just a discrepancy in pump size, but I think that's easily addressed. For the next submittal. We would like some additional design details on pipe size and swale sizing, just to confirm that that is. In fact, able to do what you're proposing it do and collect some of the existing impervious areas. There are some revisions to the text of the SWIP that are needed for consistency with the submitted plans. See, there is a, an existing sewer pipe that runs across, I believe, the area of the proposed cistern. So we would like some additional information to understand if there's a relocation of that sewer, or if they're not actually in conflict and how the two relate to each other.
We've checked they're not in conflict.
Yep. Some additional information on that would, would be helpful. And we thought that the, the one section provided through the golf course from the roadway up the hill. Was useful and it would be useful to have one further north on the site as well, especially through the area of the cistern. Just to understand the. The visual impacts up and down that road from a couple of locations. So we, we would definitely need an additional submittal from the applicant before we're comfortable that the engineering issues are complete before the board. That's what I have.
Mr. Chairman, earlier on in the process, I believe it was Nancy who had raised the question about. The proposed action and the permitted uses and whether it was consistent with the zoning code. And so I referred to that section, section five. Under the permitted uses, golf courses, swimming pools, tennis courts. Riding stables and general recreational and athletic facilities intended primarily for the use of the residents of the designed residential development. So that was just my reading of the code. It's my understanding that the prior application that Mr. Williams had referred to. There was a request to have that, have an interpretation from the building department. I think there have been comments raised by the public as part of kind of the initial application. Where the, it suggested that the planning board may want to reach out to the building inspector. To have an interpretation to make sure that the proposed uses are consistent with what's provided in, in the code.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's, and the building is the prior building inspector provided a, an opinion letter to this board as part of that prior application. So I would suspect that the current building inspector would provide something for you as well.
For this one. Okay.
For this particular application. Yes. That would be my suggestion as far as this application.
I just wanted to see if the cistern in the off season. If it should fill up, you will pump back into the ponds.
We're going to, we're going to pump to the upper end of the golf course. So it can be used to continue to irrigate the lawn.
But how you can do in, in the winter while the pipes are blown out so they won't freeze, you're going to have to put all new piping in?
During the end of the season, when you start, you know, when you move into the freezing zone and we do the final blow off, we're going to make sure the tanks are empty. At that point in time.
And I assuming that their size so that they could not fill up over the winter?
Their size to capture three inches of rainfall and I can get the gallonage, but it's, it's substantial. So they would be able to take those first couple of storm events. And then there is overflows beyond that.
Okay. I'm opening up to board member questions.
I have, I have a group of questions. First of all, I'm familiar with the site. And I'm also familiar with the history of the site. I think it was disingenuous. That you compared your program to the original. Petition project because that project was approved in 19, early 1970s. That's 50 years ago.
2017.
No, no, we didn't, we didn't. We only approved it because it was previously approved by the, the board, when they wrote the D R D. Also, those facilities were arranged as a full. Complement to a golf club, making it a full country club, meaning the tennis courts and the swimming pools. The swim, I blew, I believe there's a limit of membership of 200 people, 200 members approximately for your club. I believe.
For golf? Yeah. No, there is no limit currently. We actually have over 200 members today.
Yeah. But the, the, the idea was that those facilities, when they were approved in 1970. Were for members of the golf club to use those facilities. We are, you are now talking about putting in a facility that would be used by the general public. And that's what is a question. And this brings us to the original. Thing that, that Dave was talking about is that. You, you haven't yet got a statement with regard to is, are these, is this use applicable under the D R D? There's, there's, there is a. Drawing of the original D R D plot, flat that says that this area should be used as a golf course. Or it should be used as open space and also that it can't be subdivided. The, the question that we need to hear is, is this applicable use? When, when the, when the present facility was approved. That maintenance yard was approved as a maintenance yard. You're turning the maintenance building, you're now turning that maintenance building into a cigar, a cigar bar. A lounge, a sitting area and off simulator. That, that's, that's a lot different than a maintenance building. So I'm, I'm just trying to ask, we need to get a definition of approval. Steve Woffel wrote, as you probably saw, a very good letter asking the exact same question that I'm asking. Where is the definition and where is the, of, of the D R D and what's allowed in it? The idea of the D R D that originally was stated in our code is one thing. But the specific D R D for Heritage Hills states something much more restrictive than the D R D. It does, the D R D for Heritage Hills does not mention. Tennis courts. It doesn't, it doesn't mention swimming pools. It doesn't mention stables or grazing areas for animals. It, it basically says golf course or open space. That's something that we need to resolve before we can go much further on this side. I asked that question two week to in October. And your attorney just blew it off. My question is, you can't blow it off. You need to find out before you do any of this. Development. Because if, if, if it doesn't meet the requirements. It, it's, it's a problem right from the beginning.
We, we have been in communication with the building department. I'm not going to speak for the building inspector. We have acknowledged that our previous land use attorney, which this is most appropriately addressed, not by me as the engineer. But by our land use council is recused. And at this point in time, we don't have our new council retained. We have no objection to the memo that's come out. We're by the planning board and I'm assuming you're likely going to act tonight to ask an opinion of the building inspector. We have no objection to that happening. And next time we're before you, hopefully we'll have some more information from the building inspector. As well as we'll be represented by land use council to put this issue to bed.
Also, I looked at your drawings and the counts were actually 104 trees that you're removing, whether you, it's 104 or we're two step. However, those trees are only eight inches and above. What about all the trees that are on that site that are less than eight inches? The seven inch diameters, the six, the five and the four. That's where you get the idea that there's probably several hundred other trees in the site that are going to be removed. So if you make your tree application, you, you have to, you have to register that. It's not, it's not 104 or 106. It's much more than that.
To the luxury I have as a practitioner, because I don't write the law. And I think the luxury you have as a board is your job is to enact the law. Right now, your tree ordinance actually dictates 12 inches and above to be designated a tree. We went above and beyond and surveyed trees smaller than that. And I am reporting to you what I need to as far as a tree permit. You are correct. There are trees smaller on that site. But I'm again, working within the purview of the law and the code.
I have a question on the topic of trees. For Engineer Williams. While we look to quantify the total tree count, and I understand your point about what you're required to. To report out based on the legislation within the town that specifies 12 inches to obtain a permit. And that's accurate as far as I know and interpret it. And I don't think our, our council's here to appoint on that. But my question is, and I've read a lot of the public comments that were sent to the board and I appreciate the public for reaching out. Boards like this can't be successful if they don't have cooperation from, from the town folks. And so I, I do appreciate those from Heritage and elsewhere that may have sent in a letter. But one of the things that I, I found interesting and wanted to clarify. Was the common theme that the, the entire facility would be affected. I wish I could quote the language. I don't want to pause right now to look up the, the, the particular letter. But where I'm going with this is, is that if I was on the northwest corner of the property line of Heritage Hills. Which of my understanding is quite a large piece of property in acreage. What percentage of total trees on Heritage Hills? Whether it's a mile away or right next door to the golf course is affected if we were to remove 106 trees in total. And if you can't answer that question, and you may not be able to, I know that you guys would not have surveyed all of the trees on the property. Is there an engineering formula for the type of wood density that we have in this area? And let's say we could say one acre of property roughly equates to X amount of trees. I'm trying to get an idea to better quantify what the true aesthetic impact is. In removing 106 trees that either are eight inches or greater or 12 inches or greater, depending on what you used as your metric to make that count. To the overall quality and aesthetics for all of Heritage Hills, not just, I'm excluding the area directly surrounding the golf course. But again, there, there were many that seemed to imply that all of heritage would, would, would lose. A bucolic feel if we removed 100 trees. And I'm just trying to quantify that in, in some sort of percentage in comparison to the rest of them. If you can.
So I cannot give you that number tonight. We'd be here counting for.
I'd be pretty impressed if you could come up with that that quick.
Yeah. No, just, but just to remind the board that the 106, Bruce counted 104, so we'll say approximately 105. Trees is eight inches and above, which already exceeds what we should be reporting as far as the code. And I'm sensitive to the fact that tree removal and, and keeping a wooded buffer along the street will help keep the street light, uh, street. Escape that you have, which is why we've worked with the board to push the development into the site. Mr. Zavero, yes, we, we, it's, it would be a time consuming number to run because of the segmentation. In the Heritage Hills community and what I mean by that, it's not like I have a, a big forested block that I can easily digitize in the computer. I'd be bringing in a lot of different aerial imagery. And what I'd be trying to do is, you know, grab all the forested areas in and throughout the community. We could take a sample area. For instance, the area in between, you know, our, our existing parking lots and West Hill Drive. Just because I do have that survey and we could try and extrapolate that out. As long as you understand that's the methodology, it's, it's us inventing the methodology in this room together tonight. And it would be a, a educated guess based on that methodology. We could do that, but it would take quite a bit of time.
I, 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 I don't need specifics. I'm, I'm trying to, to, to conceptualize. What 106 trees, the impact of removing 106 trees from an area in comparison to the rest of the area. And, and I did find one of the letters that were written. Sylvia McFarland from condo 64B for the record. And her quote was, this will completely change the character and atmosphere of the entire complex. And so that's why for, and again, that was a common theme that many of the, of the, of the feedback that we received. That all of Heritage Hills will be impacted by the removal of the trees. And I, I understand that, but I, I'm just, again. Maybe we can do it this way. How big is the area that you intend to remove 106 trees from? And how big is that in comparison to all of the Heritage Hills entire complex? Maybe that's a better formula and easier to calculate for the next time that you can.
Wasn't it?
1.4 acres you have.
But that's not all tree removal. A lot of that are those existing areas because, because of the comments of the board and us relocating and a lot of those are the existing disturbed areas. And I'm, I'm certainly Mr. Prince not looking to upset you with this comment. But one of the reasons why I kept going back to the 2017 negative declaration. Is because in your environmental review of the last application, the board made determinations. On whether certain things had a significant adverse environmental impact. And that application proposed more tree removal than we do. And there was a negative declaration adopted. For me, that was an easy jumping off point to say, you've evaluated impacts on this property before and recently, within the past five years. Yeah, five years. And how does that compare to what we're doing now? And are these significant adverse impacts? And that's the only reason why I kept going back to that application.
Can you, Engineer Williams, that 2017 plan? Can you just cite what it was for? What exactly was the project at hand that would have required a much larger removal of trees?
It, it was, my understanding was for two tennis courts.
And a pool.
A pool.
And a cabana.
A cool cabana.
Yes.
68 impervious parking spaces and 20 land bank parking spaces and associated stormwater infrastructure.
And was that constructed?
No. It never went through.
It was approved. It was approved and, and they never went forward with it.
Do we know why?
They had a negative deck.
I, I understand that. So, so, and I understand Engineer Williams' point. That past precedent has shown that we've given negative declarations on projects that were larger than this one. And I, no offense, Bruce, I don't see that being disingenuous. I see that being as factual, right? It's, it's a comparative analysis to the, the two plans.
That proposal was made in 19, early 1970s and was.
No, it's 19, it's 2017.
17, Bruce. It was 1917. I mean, 2017, excuse me, 2017.
That's when it was reintroduced. But it was, the original proposal was made back when the D R D was, was, was established as far as I know.
I don't think the site was specific back in the seventies. This was the, in 2017 was the first time. The site was specifically identified with the pool, the cabana, tennis courts.
And, and the other reason I keep going back to that is we're not talking about a pool tennis courts in another portion of the site. It was the exact same area. And that's, you know, that to me is what even brings more relevancy to it.
Jack, I think you wanted to speak.
I did. First of all, let me clarify that I am a resident of Heritage Hills. As well as a member of the Society Board of Heritage Hills, which has come up in conversations. I'm sorry? Okay. Again, I, I am a resident of Heritage Hills as well as being a member of Heritage Hills Society Board. I feel I can be fair and I will not consider recusing myself from this particular discussion. So I wanted that clear, that clear. That said, I do have some questions and comments. Roadways within the Heritage Hills community are privately owned and maintained. Will you work with Heritage Hills Society to reach agreement in advance? As to what street routes within the community make the most sense for all parties involved? Assuring that vehicles involved in the project cause minimal disturbance to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. As well as minimizing disturbance to residential units flanking most of these roadways. Now you keep referring to the 2017 filing, application for the pool, et cetera. That kind of an agreement was reached with society prior to the approval of that project. of that project.
There was a pre pre-construction survey of all the facility.
I was just going to get to that, Bruce, so if I may. There is a possibility that the volume of the vehicles related to construction and the weight of their payloads may cause damage to the roadways, both surface and subsurface. What is your plan to protect those elements? Would you agree to working with society to create a condition study of those stretches of roadway? Both before your work begins and after the entire project is completed. And to assuring the Heritage Hills community, it will not be left financially liable for damages to their roadways and infrastructure which may be caused by vehicles related to your project.
We made them do it in 2017. I remember clearly.
We did.
Just one, one thing I just want to make clear, and then I'll like Quentin answer. We're talking about through construction where we can control. We're talking about through construction. Obviously, you know, once construction is complete, as with Somers National now, you know, if people come to the course, we can't control.
We're not talking about normal vehicular traffic in the operation of the golf course.
So Jack, to my previous comments when I opened, we are more than willing to work with the condo associations as well as Heritage Hill Society to address any of the concerns prior to approval. So uh, we are open to that. And we've had discussions about roads over the last uh, year now in terms of um, our our contribution. So we do make contributions for the roads, even though they are private um, towards um, the road uh, maintenance. So uh, we welcome that opportunity to speak to society on how we can address that during the construction period as.
Good. Thank you for that. And I'm sure we'll hold you to that.
Steve, if I remember correctly, they had to post a bond in 2017, but yeah, that's how that's usually handled, isn't it?
Yeah, and that's typical for all projects um, that come to this board and that receive approvals, that there would be an appropriate, these um, funded construction bond for the work.
I would assume that a project like this is not going to have anywhere near the traffic that excavating and and putting in a swimming pool would have.
I would have to re-familiarize myself with that particular project, but I think that what's proposed here is um, less land disturbance and less cut fill. Fewer vehicles in and out of the site would be a reasonable conclusion.
But there is a large disturbance to create the retention of water.
Yes.
Stormwater and uh, that
Correct.
needs to be taken into consideration. That's a very large area at the bottom of a revi- of a revi- ravine, I'm sorry. At the bottom of a ravine as you look down from this proposed course. So we need to count that.
Yes.
Um, and and I'm very pleased, Quentin, that you're you're willing to meet with society and make all of that work. That's a very important factor if this is moved forward.
You know, just as an aside, I remember um, a lot of the residents that were down at the time that was the tenth hole, I believe. Now it's the first hole. They were very positive that 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 work was going to be done. Because if the if the tennis courts and pool didn't go through, obviously, they were going to still continue with the water problem. So sometimes there's a win, win-win. You know what I mean?
Yep, I do.
Yeah.
I do, and I love wins for everybody.
I haven't heard from Nancy. Oh, sorry.
Quite done. I'm close.
Nope, say as long as you want.
All right, uh, Quentin, specifically to you, would you consider breaking this application to into two applications? One to construct the mini golf course and the new parking area dedicated to it. The other uh, to construct the new golf simulator area, cigar bar and the related patio. My reason for asking is that one project by itself may result in considerable question and challenges from the existing community, creating long delay from public hearings and outcry before you can begin construction. While the other project may result in minimal communal concern and delays and can move forward quickly. Splitting the effort into two distinct projects may prove beneficial to everybody concerned.
I'm gonna let Quentin speak in a minute, but my my first question would be.
Can you speak into the mic?
My first question would be, do we have a sense as to which one you think would create the bigger public controversy?
I think the one that would move forward relatively quickly perhaps might be the uh, the cigar bar and the golf simulator as opposed to the mini golf.
Okay.
Uh, my perspective personally is that those might be somewhat different audiences with a different uh, perception as to how they might impact our community.
Okay, um, I don't know, Quentin, you can jump in if you want to consider that, but there's there's business implications.
Yeah, I mean, again, we'll take it under advisement and consideration. Um, I don't want to say one way or the other right now, but I understand your point. And I would confer with uh, my partner and uh, with Richard and Orlando's attorney as well uh, that we bring on. So uh, we intended to get together and regroup anyway after this meeting, so we'll take that uh, for consideration.
I look forward to that, Quentin.
All right, great.
And yes, I do know the applicant personally.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Nancy or Vicky or anyone else?
A quest question. Well, first to circle back to um, the sidewalk. When the sidewalk had ended, Steve said, was there any? When the sidewalk ended, Steve said, was there anything remaining that I was concerned about? And I said, the berm, the slope, the view, the runoff. And everybody actually had left. We didn't mean to be sneaky, but we went down. We found a drain that was obscured by some um, leafy matter and et cetera. And we went down the slope to take a closer look at it. And it had been a a major concern uh, of the board on the previous application, the she flowing runoff. So at going down the slope and looking up, I think something that would be helpful um, to everybody would be, and I think you mentioned this, um, an elevation, something that allows everybody to see from the road below as you look up, what exactly are you going to see? What is that sort of perspective with?
Excellent.
Trees. The other thing is um, in order to install the infrastructure for the drainage that will allow for the irrigation to go back to golf course. Is there any chance that there would be any additional loss of trees that would come from the disturbance needed to do that? Are you pretty sure on your numbers that you wouldn't lose anything else that you're required to count? And um, I'll have another question. So if you want to start with those two, I don't want to throw so many at you.
So um.
And I'm not an engineer, so please excuse my lack of technical framing of a question, but I think you know where I'm going.
I believe that drain that you noticed, Vicky, is is only 15 inches in diameter, which is a small, very small drain.
And I think while Rich is looking at that, when we did the sidewalk, one thing that was noticeable was that there in that overall area that's going to be recaptured for this proposed activity, there is right now um, a lot of material that in future, you wouldn't be able to let sit there, right? So like in in my house, I have a drawer, and if I need to pull things together, I throw it in the drawer, right? And on your site, it kind of seems like that area is your drawer. And you're not going to have that. So I think it would be good for everybody to know what is the plan to manage the type of materials that are there now for the future, because you're not going to have that kind of buffer of space to put something that is not immediately visible to everybody that goes by.
It's a great question, and you saw a lot of tree trunks and remnants of um, what was the storm in 2018. So that was a one time.
And other things, there was wooden pallets.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Other construction.
We would clean that up as well. Yeah, and you know, it's just a matter of getting a dumpster there in a timely fashion. And we recognize that. We actually had a lot of golf construction work done this year where the pallets were containing sod and other materials for that construction. So um, I already have reached out to our um, uh, refuse removal company to take that all away. So it's just a matter of um, you know, keeping it cleaner and and making that more proactively managed. But uh, most of the woodwork and the and the trees that you see that have come down were from that 2018 storm, and that was the only area that we had to kind of place it to get the course back open again. So that's been on our project list for quite some time. This is obviously one opportunity to expedite that.
Okay, all right. And so, Rich, the questions I was asking.
So um, I have, you know, I've obviously walked all of these areas, you know, as part of us planning and making sure what we want to do fits in the field. Yes, we have accounted for tree removal associated with the installation of the stormwater system. It is a handful of trees, um, and that is to be able to get it in. We're predominantly focusing on it it looks like it almost used to be an old roadway, but it has a lot of undulating topography. And you're correct, that berm which kind of acts is almost creates a depression in that area. Um, it 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 has, it definitely has been disturbed in the past and the drainage system, it looks like that was installed west of this parking lot, which I'm going to assume, and I haven't seen the original drainage maps, but I'm going to assume was supposed to have some very specific tributary areas. Doesn't appear to be functioning well as far as catching runoff. And it looks like the runoff does kind of sit behind this berm, or if it gets to a certain elevation, it would run down and around some openings that that I saw. We're going to focus our stormwater system in that opening area up. Um, because I want to make use of the lack of trees in that area.
Okay.
Um, and then as far as what we're going to have with the golf, with the miniature golf course, we're and the new parking lot. You can see how it basically spans the length, top to bottom. So we're going to now actually have formal hardscape surfaces where we're going to be able to more accurately catch runoff. Um, this was similar to a situation I had in Pleasantville. There's there's a street there. It was at the base of a large hill, and it would flood constantly. And we ended up putting um, 70 townhomes on the hillside, and everyone thought we were going to make the flooding worse. And I we spent a lot of time talking to the public in the county saying when you create a long linear hardscape surfaces, sometimes you actually have the opportunity to improve things because you can catch it accurately and then put it where you want it to go. And that's what we're going to have the opportunity to do here. Between this parking lot with curbs and gutters and drainage and the miniature golf course with the correct pitch and sidewalks and being able to direct the runoff um, and a cutoff swell below it, we're going to be able to catch that runoff accurately.
And speaking of the parking lot, you um, were mentioning uh, an increase of eight to 16 peak hour trips. Could you explain the relationship of that math of eight to 16 peak hour increased trips and the number of parking spaces you're you're providing? I mean, every time we put down more impervious surface like that, we're creating a bigger heat island and more runoff. So I just, I just wanted to dig a little deeper into the rationale for that number. Is is there any, would it make sense at all to land bake some of them and see if they're needed to have less impervious surface? I I just, I don't know if we've kind of gone, looked at that before.
I would want to just check the code to make sure that we don't create a zoning issue. The 24 spaces comes out of your code.
Okay.
Um, we didn't invent that number. The eight to 16 peak hour trips comes out of uh, Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, a trip generation manual. So these are published data that we we rely on as engineers. Um, I would just want to make sure before we start talking about land banking, which Quentin, I I'm sure you open to if if you're willing. That we wouldn't create an issue where now all of a sudden we we need a zoning variance.
Sure, I I I understand. Um, and um, uh, the other question that I wanted to ask was about the redirection of the water um, in the beginning of the fall cold weather season with outflow onto the course. Um, do we know exactly where those outflows are? My concern is that we get some early frost, hard ground, water runs over the ground and then goes to a place that nobody wants it to go, naming mainly toward a unit, toward a residence. And so as I hear that, that that's becomes a concern for me because um, prior to the other application, we had a lot of concern and and it's always a concern about runoff going toward units. So I would want to make sure that we're really absolutely certain that as we look at the contours of the course and where the outflow is, that 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 water just doesn't have anywhere to go that is a unit.
We agree with you. And and we've we've looked at it preliminarily just before picking points. Um, and we'll we'll supplement our mapping to show the downstream areas and we'll work with the board to make sure everyone's comfortable.
That 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 we we kind of needed on the record to show that we've looked at it and and uh, that I think at this moment in time, that those are my questions and I absolutely support that. I think it makes sense to ask for an opinion um, before we go forward for everybody's sake of of time and money and investment and clarity. We've got
Yes.
The two golf courses, we and the proposed mini. And I think everybody should have a clear understanding of what are the acceptable uses on all on on the two, the one that is the nine hole that is not actively used as a golf course. Um, the golf course is a golf course and the proposal for this use on this piece of land. So I think it would be very good to know for your application, what the accepted uses.
Great. One, one other question. When we were on the sidewalk, I think uh, Quentin said that you have you you have two uh, tanks, a diesel and a uh, a gas tank.
Fuel tank.
Fuel tanks where the uh, that new simulator building is going to be located. And it was told to us that we, they'd be moved to the west, which puts them just above where the hill starts to go down. Uh, I think you need to make a uh, an understanding to that so that Steve Steve here can can understand that those are going to be moved and where they're going to be moved and and if if do they prevent, do they uh, sick, do, could they have some problems with regard to anything like leakage or anything like that? How how that would affect uh, the area? So uh, that's, I think, something you have to look into.
That's a good, that's a good comment. We do show the relocation on the site plans now. And we can review the location with Steve and make sure they're safe and appropriate.
And those tanks presently have secondary containment, given their size.
I mean.
No, this is actually a regular gas and diesel tank.
But the volume of the tanks, we'll we'll review that with the.
Yeah, I think one is 400 gallons, the diesel and the the other one's a thousand gallon regular. Ironically, the diesel tank was on the moved it to just have them both together. And now, now we're talking about moving back to the original spot.
I'm assuming in this day and age, it has to be containment all around them anyhow, right?
We'll review the petroleum bulk storage rights with the applicant, make sure it's all in order.
Um, more comments and questions?
Just to say that uh, it's good to see that you've been cooperative so far in modifying your plans for the project. Uh, you've been responsive to the comments that we've made previously. And um, one of my bigger concerns tonight was going to be those lights on the poles. And you've greatly reduced the height already. I didn't have to mention it. So again, I want to thank you for that.
Is it Nancy? Nancy or or Chris, you have anything?
I'm just waiting for whatever Dave Smith finds out from the building inspector.
Okay. So I think, what does the board feel? I I think it would behoove us not to entertain any kind of setting a public hearing out till we I mean, it's kind of pretty big.
Too soon.
We're going to hear back.
We don't have everything we need.
Yeah, well, and what we what we don't have is significant.
And the public needs that in order that they can.
And so just so the public knows, here here's how it works. Once we have all the information and we feel comfortable, then we will set um, a date for a public hearing. Obviously, it's it's open to everyone. Um, because of the potential impact of how many people will come. We may have to either go to an alternative site or Zoom. I don't know. To be honest with you. Um, the last public hearing, we had to go to another site. We didn't have COVID, so it wasn't a problem. And we can't put 50 people or 60 people or whatever the number is in this room under these conditions. So we'll work something out, but everybody will know when there is a public hearing. Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any closing comments from anyone? No, I wish everybody a great end of the year. Um, Hanukkah's over, so I guess left is Christmas and New Year. A a healthy and happy one to everyone. And we'll see and we'll see you in 2022. Our our next meeting is uh, January 12th.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.